We enter with the purpose tonight to ask you to watch over our commissioners. And Lord present to them with wisdom to do your agenda for our county. And Father, we asked you to forgive us that had not prayed and supported our commissioners in their decisions as we should be. We expect too much out of them, Lord. I asked you tonight to lay upon all of our hearts that our commissioners have great weight upon their shoulders, decisions that will move our county forward. God give them that wisdom. Walk with them when they're by themselves and when they're together, Lord, put harmony within their hearts. We ask this in Christ Jesus' name and all of God's people. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Much to approve of sound. Second. First, I'm interested to take a question. I'll pose the act. I'll pose. Out of three is Cape Fear Regional Re-Start of Regional Bicycle. So, come on forward.
Good. Thank you very much. All right. I appreciate everyone's time. Might have seen some off doing with all the planning we're having and how to play good work on these projects, which was led by the Cape Fear Council Governments and Allen Serkin. Just a little bit of background on this planning process. You know, NTDMT supports several regional plans. They've supported several regional plans around the state in this year Cape Fear Region, which is sort of an oddly configured boundary, but it covers seven counties including the southern half of Bladen County. And this is a region-wide plan and it connects the ideas to connect a lot of the communities downtowns and look at regional connectivity, but provide best practices for all levels of government, nonprofits, folks that partner with best practices throughout the region. The overall purpose touches on many aspects of the overall quality of life, including just transportation choices. We've developed a great planning around the automobile over years and years and years, but we forgot about other modes, just walking and biking in particular. And so we seek to offer more choice in transportation. But safety is a big part of this, you know, healthy safety, staying active, having an active community is a huge, huge component of quality of life, as well as deferring the economy with transportation choices, tourism aspects. These are all important components of why we need this plan and try to become an active community. This process got guided by a steering committee that was made up of different levels of government, NPO representatives, NTDMT, municipalities, nonprofits like the East Coast Greenway. We had five committee meetings throughout the process, which began over a year ago, and the committee helped guide and review the plan throughout various stages. The planning process, you know, we had public outreach. We had, you know, an online project website with an online comment forum, hard copy comment forum. We went to public outreach events and gave community directly, had an online input map where you could drop points and draw lines and routes and suggestions, some fun ways that we engage with the community. You know, like I said, safety infrastructure is a big important part of this plan. In Chapter Two, you'll see some stats on bicycle crashes in particular throughout the region. In this region in particular, it's about eighty per year, which is about once a week. And that's important stats concerns. There aren't a whole lot of cyclists out there. A lot of roads right now are designed in a way that, you know, folks don't feel comfortable getting out there on a bike. This has to do with lack of bicycle lanes, paved shoulder paths that are off-road. You have, you know, adult and kids certainly have trouble feeling safe out there. So, you know, what to do about this, you know, infrastructure options out there in this plan, you'll see, you know, different contexts. We want to highlight opportunities for shared use paths, you know, try to get towards, more towards separation, you know, separate bikeways that your average adult can feel comfortable getting out there on. You're certainly going to have near hardcore cyclists that you see out there riding any road, no matter how many, you know, how fast speed traffic is going or how many cars are on that road, you know, cyclists getting out there. But we want your average resident to be out there and feel comfortable. And so there's different facility options, you know, including paved shoulder out in the rural roadways and, you know, off-road paths as well. So, big picture wise, you know, we took a look at the region, we looked at connecting, you know, regional hubs and having those kind of these central areas where you can kind of build this network off of. And so this is just sort of a zoomed out look. And what we did was, you know, make actual routes and suggestions for infrastructure to connect our downtowns, connect regional destinations like Lake Wacamaw, you know, state parks, Cape Fear River access points, that type of thing, and build on existing planned routes, such as the state park system, the East Coast Greenway. We took more zoomed in look at some of those, you know, near-term projects that could be possible, you know, through some of our downtown centers. You know, we highlighted fifteen projects in particular around the region that can be seen as some of those low-hanging fruit, next step projects that are, you know, the bigger bang for the buck and including, you know, in Bladen County, we pulled from the 2015 Elizabeth Town Bike Plan, highlighting a key connection from the middle school along Brown's Creek to Brown's Creek Nature Park, the bike trail and all of the bike lanes on the east side of town through some of the neighborhoods. Just looking at, we kind of establish those community-wide connectivity options and then, you know, long-term, looking at how do we connect community to community and make this a thoroughly connected network. So this is kind of zooming in look at what needs, you know, priority products, such as the one I mentioned, what the town look like. We have opportunities and constraints described on the map and an overview and along with the playing level cost estimate for those near-term projects. And then, as I mentioned as well, there's a, you know, long-term vision. There's some old abandoned rail corridors, you know, there's the East Coast Greenway and the state bike track system, you know, some of our roadways that make connections throughout the region that are really important, that we highlight to, sort of a longer-term, bigger picture item that some of these near-term topics fit into. And this is a couple photo simulations that help illustrate some of the infrastructure pieces that are simple. You know, we want to be strategic about this, so, you know, as the roadways are repaved or reconstructed, you know, sometimes just adding a little bit of extra pavement is an easy way, a low-cost way to make it safe for everyone, you know, for that cyclist, for cars, main road, you know, for all modes to coexist a little bit more efficiently and safely. You know, things like off-road trails as well. You know, this one's from near Sunset Beach on Beach Road and, you know, looking at off-road paths as well where there's space and where there's opportunities to connect our businesses, you know, so folks can get out there and, you know, leave their car at home when they decide to do so and when they want to choose to do so and try to bring some of these to life. And here's a cool rail corridor example from Burgaud to Wilmington Center, that old rail line that's still in DOT right away. You know, great example, and these are great examples of, you know, ways to, you know, for economic, rural economic development, but also transportation opportunities across our communities and counties. So in addition to infrastructure, you know, there's policy suggestions in the plan as well that, you know, take from best practices, promote complete streets, you know, options, you know, looking at making, you know, designing our communities to be more connected in our roadway networks and with things like rumble strips, you know, making those safer both cars and bikes. You know, programming, the Watch for Me NC campaign, you might have seen these around different parts of the region, or, you know, especially I think Wilmington is part of this program, Raleigh-Durham and some communities around the region. It's a free program with NTDMT, but they provide bumper stickers, even trading with law enforcement. And the whole idea, the whole message is, hey, look after people on bikes, look after people walking, you know, they're part of our transportation system too. But other things, you know, simple things as bicycle parking, agritourism, combining that with bicycling, you know, in Bladen County in particular, there's some beautiful, you know, backcountry roads that are really great to bike on because there's low traffic. Those draw, those draw people, those draw dollars, people who want to just get out and ride in the countryside, ride fifty miles and connecting with agritourism is another way to diversify those two options. So as part of this plan, some brochure maps were also developed. These not only highlight the regional network, but also, you know, if a cyclist want to get out there today and, you know, ride from Elizabeth Town, you know, across the county, you know, in any direction, I highlight some of those roads that are lower traffic volume, have lower speed traffic, we try to direct them to the best route, the safest route, you know, based on, you know, speed limits, traffic volumes out there, existing infrastructure. And this builds on the WMPO map that was produced a couple of years ago, so it completes a bigger picture of the region. And those kinds of zooming in look at that bicycle security map, you know, highlights Versumville Road, Rosendale Airport going into Elizabeth Town, Bladen County, the southern part that's part of this regional plan. And so to sum up here, you know, how to use this plan, there's something to help, it's another tool for decision-making for roadway projects, you know, as roads are rebuilt, you know, as projects to the community, you know, be sure to reference this plan because this is part of a, you know, bigger picture, you know, network and also just a diverse transportation system that offers multiple modes. You know, project sheets and cost estimates to look for specific products and the low-hanging feet, near-term projects that can kind of bring them closer to reality and adaptation. You know, ideas for programming and policy, you know, complement the infrastructure approach. And there's a lot of ways to become bicycle-friendly and kind of attack it from different angles to be as efficient as possible with resources that we have. And so this plan can be used, you know, for grant applications, you know, there's a lot of dollars out there from different levels of government, from the nonprofit sector or the private sector, you know, this is a tool, you know, when folks, grantors ask, you know, have you guys studied this, have you guys studied the project, you can show that it's a plan that's going to help it score a little better, it's going to help it compete for funds that are out there. You know, brochure maps as well can help promote bicycle and tourism, another component, another way to show off your community and why this place is special. And so that's just kind of the zoom out version of this planning process. It was, you know, a really wonderful process, it went over a year, and I had the honor to work on it. And at this point, I would take any questions if you all have.
I have a question.
Yes.
I'll settle actually.
Sure.
That's okay. I'm gonna stand up just because I'm, I feel short, but I'm gonna stand up. I did want to ask you, and thank you so much for coming out here tonight, but I've been to all of the White Lake, and I know that White Lake over the past several years has become one of the main triathlon locations throughout the country. And I know that because people who actually come and take part of these triathlons, they used to actually stop or throw their traps in the yard, because, that's fine, that's what they did, if you give them drinks and just throw them, you pick them up, that's cool, you cheer them on. But we've had a little bit of, you know, change, I guess, in route because of how our neighborhood, Waterford, connects with Turquoise. And so now there's not that streamlined where you can just run through both of the neighborhoods, you actually go through seven oh one the whole way. That's not my point. My point is, when you're deciding on what to bring for Bladen County and these bike trails and everything, how, what are the criteria that you have to go upon to base your decision to invest in a county?
Certainly. You know, big pieces are, you know, the regional hubs, you know, connecting downtowns and so Bladen County in particular, you know, looking at that connection through, I say connection, through Elizabeth Town to the Cape Fear River and looking at, you know, that connection down to Bladenboro and on through to Lake Wacamaw, Whiteville, you know, those are our hubs that we're trying to reach to and those are our main focuses. And so looking at, but also building upon what's already been planned, you know, the Elizabeth Town Bicycle Plan 2015, we want to pull from, we don't want to reinvent the wheel, so we want to pull from existing plan, and that's also shows up in the county CTP. And then, you know, our steering committee helps to try to decide, you know, which ones, you know, we want to pull from to make this a regional distribution that's fair as possible. And so, you know, it's an iterative process and, you know, we ask the public, you know, we go out to outreach events and people, you know, leave comments through the online survey and online input map. And so it comes from several directions, but we're just, they're key.
Okay. Other than tonight, where else have you publicly submitted?
Which other?
For Bladen County?
Government entities? WMPO, you know, Cape Fear, RPO, Pender County, New Haven.
In Bladen County specifically?
Oh, in Bladen County?
Yeah.
This is the first time we've presented Bladen County or anywhere in Bladen County right now.
Are you trying to target a certain event?
A certain?
Event, or anything that's coming, or is this just like?
No, this is just master planning for, you know, short-term and long-term, you know, infrastructure programming, not specifically event or anything like that, but this is for, the idea is for this to be part of the community's transportation system.
Okay. There's going to be a UFO or USO coming up soon, I think in like April, for our wounded warriors and their families and anyone who's had to deal with those individuals who have lost or not lost permanently, but have had to deal with coping mechanisms for those who have those loved ones who've gone overseas. So that might be something that you might want to kind of touch base on, because I do know that Rotary Club Bladen County is promoting that. It's something we do every year, it's the eight-page trail run here at Brown's Bike Creek. So just so you know, that might be something that y'all can reach out to and maybe help support and promote as well.
Sure. Yeah, I think bringing these, the brochure maps would be a great place for you to have as well.
I think so.
I mean, that's a great example of how important this type of infrastructure is to the community, just a huge way that the community can interact with, you know, with existing facilities and get out and be together.
Just looking through my notes, maybe one second.
Go ahead.
Yeah, please.
Yes.
I didn't notice any hogs on eighty-seven from Wilmington to Elizabeth Town. Do you have Ridgewood, St. Field, Chartered, Pouch Creek, no hogs, nothing in between or any consideration for any of them?
Well, I think the focus, yeah, the focus for the region map, you can kind of pull it up back there.
And I say that because we have several bike groups in those small towns.
Yeah. And those are important because, you know, having, you know, places where, you know, bikes already ride in those community centers, you know, the thing is, you know, we just try to highlight, as far as like the big picture of starting off, developing these networks, you know, we want to, we have to keep it simple at some point and keep it efficient. And so, you know, sometimes some of the smaller communities aren't necessarily called out right away, but doesn't mean they're any less important.
But any way for them to merge in or do you get information?
Oh, yeah, certainly. Certainly. I think Allen Serkin would be the best point of contact, and he's a, you know, Cape Fear RPO, we, you know, there's probably a lot of, on that end, so he'd be the best contact point, you know, moving on.
The one other thing that I had, what for the area region? Was when you're basing your routes, do you have to contact any of the HOAs to get approval to use their areas throughout their maps?
It depends, you know, if there is a project that goes through HOA, I think, you know, for implementation, the next, one part of the next steps in implementation is you must connect, you know, reach out to a community and reach out to, you know, HOAs if you want to develop something specific, you know, for a master plan like this, you know, doing public outreach and getting the word out as best we can throughout the process is the best way we can engage with the public. And so we're not able to reach out to every HOA throughout this type of master planning process, but in a more zoomed in one sort of.
Well, if there's anything that we can do as a board to help you promote this, I know for myself, I have a personal, I own fitness centers in town, so I have a personal, you know, I help fitness wellness generally across the board, is a little bit more of my league, but I do, I do understand that there are certain things you've got to, you know, checks and balances and all that kind of stuff, it happens.
Certainly.
But awareness is number one, as a key. And then also community, you know, because most people in Bladen County, we are a tight-knit community and we support each other. So if we know about it, we tend to support. It's that awareness that I feel like across the board is lacking a lot of things. So I just want to make sure that when things come up, that we are aware of them. And so I appreciate you coming here and letting us know this because I definitely want to make our county aware of it. So, thank you.
Is the dog now?
How much funding has been set aside and appropriated for this infrastructure development through Bladen County?
None has been set aside. This plan doesn't require any kind of set aside or dedicate any funding. What it does is just kind of highlights opportunities for projects if funding is available.
So what I'm asking, if I was looking at some of the corridor that you was building along the highways, that would have to be developed to DOT when they develop a highway? Or how would you insert those pieces in?
Well, it depends, you know, like I said, if it's a roadway project, a lot of times, one of the most efficient ways to incorporate a bike facility is when they're repaved, reconstructed, you know, certainly, you know, greenway connections in Wilmington, for example, are different beasts, of course. You know, sometimes projects, the Greenlight Project in South Wilmington was developed as part of a new subdivision that, you know, they saw, they worked with the city on their master greenway plan and they wanted to come through their development, it's sort of a selling point. So sometimes, you know, roadway projects, you know, as roadways are developed or as residential development occurs, sometimes these can be dealt with on the place, but they can certainly be standalone projects as well.
So the state doesn't appropriate money for this specifically?
Correct. Yeah, for implementation, no, correct, that's, yes, that's a good point.
Are you a part of the mountain to the sea?
Is this project, or is this?
Are you part of the one that made it across the road?
Well, we are in particular, just because that, you know, isn't geared directly towards biking, a lot of it's, you know, hiking and pedestrian focused, but certainly, you know, something that we looked at in this planning process is destination, you know, there's some issue with bicycle connectivity that makes the sea trail, and the one arm does come down through here to the state parks and on the north side of Cape Fear River, and it's a very important consideration. And as trail systems develop, if you want to coordinate amongst them, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Item B is considered or adopted resolution to support Cape Fear Regional Bicycle Plan. Is there much to approve?
Much, much.
Mr. Breck, second vote to Brett, in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Like so.
Thank you very much.
Bladen Community College has honored by providing for workforce and student education and Dr. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Commission, we appreciate the opportunity to be here for initiative that we've been working on for some time at the college. We certainly want our students and those who take courses there to be recognized for the skills that they have. And there is a national career readiness certificate that the college has been a part of for some time. And we're working with industries to ensure that the people that they employ have this certificate. So we bring this to you tonight, and Mr. Breck is going to explain, talk a little bit about it, and we'll answer any questions.
All right. Thank you again for giving us an opportunity to talk with you this evening. Work-ready community is a workforce to help more initiative that is supported by our local workforce development board, the London River Council of Government. And the purpose of the initiative is to showcase the talent of our workforce in Bladen County. This can be done as the participants take three work keys assessments, with reading, math, and locating information. Whenever the assessments are scored, the individual can earn either a bronze, silver, gold, or platinum career readiness certificate. It's just like the Olympics, the higher you score, the greater your credential will be. A bronze level certificate shows that the individual has basic entry-level skills needed for most jobs. The results are keyed into a national database on the North Carolina Career Readiness Certification website, and it's available to potential employers. Bladen County currently has two thousand one hundred and ninety-one individuals who have earned a career readiness certificate on read. That's those that have come through high school, those that have been in programs at the college, and then we do get a few walk-in participants that want to take the assessments and on this credential. Now, business and industry employers can help promote this initiative by either preferring or by requiring an individual to have a career readiness certificate in the hiring process. The community college will administer the assessments and enter the results into the national database. Now, for employers, the CRC or the career readiness certificate offers a reliable means of determining whether a potential employee has the necessary literacy skills to be job-ready. And then for job seekers, the CRC serves as a portable credential that's recognized in every state, and that can be more meaningful to employers than a high school degree or a resume that just cites their work experience. So we're here this evening to enlist your support to help Bladen Community College become, or not Bladen Community College, but Bladen County, thank you, become certified as a work-ready community. There are a number of individuals from the community college, from public schools, economic development, and the workforce solutions that will train together to promote this initiative. However, we need your support in the signing and adopting of the resolution for this initiative.
Pardon me?
Yes, sir.
Is the dog now? On the initiative that you're referring to, if this with a particular skill development or this leadership, it does it deal with specific skills or is?
Yes, sir.
How specific does it get, initiative?
There are three assessments. One is reading, mathematics, and then locating information. So the individual is assessed on their reading skills and their math skills, and then the ability to locate and find information, like to read a procedure, to be able to read a gauge, to be able to look at a graph and find the information on a graph.
I have two questions. I realize through high school, work keys, they have already earned over the balance of the work key. So how many have the college earned already? In the actual college?
Well, they're all keyed into the same database, and so I do not have those numbers, but I would be glad to get that for you.
Would you please, because I know the school does it all the time because it goes through it. They actually, not only do the students earn, but the teachers receive bonus during the end of year if their students are successful over seven percent. So, but you're saying you really be a hub or center component?
Because we, as a college, we offer the assessments, they still offer them in the high school as well. What we are trying to do is get business and industry to buy into the concept, that if this person holds this credential, that we know, number one, if it's a bronze level, that they are entry-level. If they're at silver or gold, then you have someone that probably has a little more potential in the beginning.
And there are some industries that you have to have that certification to be employed. So we're trying to promote that and working with industry, just appears itself and with that as well, is working with industries to call, industry to use this credential in the hiring process.
Good.
Mr. Breck made a motion to approve the resolution and support of our work-ready community initiative as our second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Breck, Mr. Breck has got a question.
I do, I have a question. What's the difference, because I mean, I've read in papers, few things recently, what's the difference between the college career path and the, I guess, work-ready community incentive? What's the difference between all the different pathways that high school students have now to enter the workforce?
Now, that's the difference, that's the difference. High school, there are several pathways that high school students can take, college transfer, and then we offer several industrial technology and some of those pathways that were approved by the state. So the students, high school students, juniors and seniors coming, take certain courses toward a social degree. You've heard about that, we had nineteen students this last year who had the social degree, completed that before they finished high school. So they're in one of these course-ready pathways.
And they're just earlier on, I guess?
Pardon me?
Just earlier on, like a?
I don't know, that came about before this, I would say, yes. That's your question.
The pathway is if we're starting in high school, and hopefully move them straight from high school into college courses and then follow, you know, that same career path.
But those high school students could take this and then get away.
Yes, high schools can take this, but this is a credential, this is a certificate that they hold in their hand, they can put it on the wall, they can put it in their portfolio to present to employers, and it's a way to identify their skill level. But for our county, when you put them all together.
But it is different, it's not the same thing. This is something altogether different. And that's why I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't getting too, you know, because it, I mean, it does, I mean, it's wonderful, I think it's great, but it's hard when you're not there to understand the difference between the both, but I think it's wonderful. And thank y'all.
Is the dog now? The question I'm asking, the workforce, they say, is turning from more or less the. the four-year college or in type thing to the skilled development workforce. How is that implemented with young people who want this certification? How does that impact with them choosing to go whether they want to go into a skilled workforce or want to go into a college environment? How did this impact that control what you're doing with this initiative?
This particular initiative is really, it can help you either for those students that want to get a job and go to work, even right out of high school. Or if they want to continue on to a two-year or four-year college, this is a credential that goes with them regardless of which path they choose. It's almost like holding a high school diploma, but it's better because it shows that you have greater than high school level learning.
This is live streaming?
Well, this is the beginning steps, is to get our county involved in helping us promote this. Once we have a resolution in our county, then we will be trained. Remember, I said there was a number of people from various organizations that are in this whole plan, from workforce solutions, from public schools. We have someone identified in each of these entities that will train with us on how to promote this within our county. I do know that it's going to involve visiting employers, talking with employers, and educating them, just like we are here this evening, to understand this initiative and how important it is. And again, that follows after the signing of the resolution. This is the beginning steps of becoming a certified work-ready community.
And that's a statewide initiative for our college. How many counties have signed up?
There are twenty-eight counties presently that are certified work-ready communities. And we want to be right there.
So we think being on the forefront should-
One other question. Can you mention the number of twenty-one ninety?
Two thousand one hundred and ninety people have already earned a career readiness certificate in Bladen County.
So what percent of that are Bladen citizens?
Well, majority.
Seventy percent?
But the working, you may be in the working force. I don't have a working force paper, am I?
You can look at all the other counties. You can go to the North Carolina Career Readiness Website, which is www.crcnc.com. You can look in every county and it will show you what their workforce looks like as far as the number of credentials that they've earned. I can tell you that right now, we have six hundred and ninety-nine people in Bladen County with a bronze level certificate. We have one thousand two hundred and seventy-two people with silver certificates, two hundred and twenty-nine with gold, and two with platinum. Now, again, that's just the people that have taken the assessments. If more people would take the assessments, obviously, our numbers would keep it better. And we want our numbers to be better so that when we have our potential industry that is looking to locate to Bladen County, they can look and say, okay, we have people that are work-ready.
Is this another economic tool for employees?
It is.
People that want to invest in Blaine County or industries already in here, so they can go to this database and see what potential employees are available.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Any more discussion? On favor? On favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Individuals wishing to address the commissioner?
Mrs. John A. A. Ants?
I'm here with my mother, Luther Robinson. She's eighty-eight years old. On July the sixth, twenty-seventeen, we were transported to her doctor's appointment. And we were left with no way home. Didn't know we had funds or anything. Fifty miles from home. Hundred-degree weather that day.
Is that all?
Well, I think that some changes need to be made. We were not treated with respect or dignity. And the letter that we received from Bart referred to my mother as an adult, in my opinion.
What? What need to say?
Because it's stated, I didn't go retrieve my mother. And the letters was just false, all in it.
Can we see the letter?
Excuse me?
Can we see the letter, Dan?
Is that all the same?
Well, I think something needs to be done for seniors. I mean, she was in a doctor's appointment. She was in the back in the X-rays. That was out of her control. I could not go back there and get her. I have proof that what they said on the letter is not true. I do have, from the doctor's office.
If you only leave that to the other side, be fine.
Well, could you make a copy, please?
Yep. Please, I'm a cop.
And I highlighted the time difference.
Hey, yo, see ya. Okay. Thank you, ma'am. We'll get back.
Do you want to add anything?
Anyone else like to speak? Matters of interest, commissioners? Anyone have anything? Because I got one thing that I want to ask about. The remand to, to the jail. I seen something that I wasn't aware of, that they were not observed at jail. And I'm just, with Mr. Martin, if the commission will make this more, I want to know why some of the structure stuff was not what I had thought it was going to be in the structure and how the jail was developed and some of them.
Did you mention there's a many jail?
And I would like to, one, this one particular thing, this, when I was there, I didn't pay a lot of attention, but then I got a thought about it. It's the actual movement of the cell block doors.
Control from a tower.
It's the lock's control. But I thought, no, all reason to ask a question, I thought, I didn't know what we did to some money saving.
No.
Or what happened to that?
That was part of the design.
That was original design?
That was original design. None of that was changed. That was not a change order. And that was, am I right, Mr. Martin? That was part of the original design?
I'll be glad to double check on that.
This, this signature, that, that, that.
Give you a little insight further, okay? In the original design, what we found was mechanical doors. They had a lot of mechanical problems with them. They get hung up and everything. It was figured that it would be less maintenance to have the door that you may have yet to close.
So they must have changed on it?
But it was changed in the early designs.
That was very early on.
Very early design.
I just didn't know, but it sounded caught my attention.
Well, nothing we changed after the design was planned.
No problem. I just looked at that one.
They went to what, hydraulic lock, what was it?
It went from hydraulic lock to electric lock.
Yeah.
Command lock. Okay. That was one of my concerns. I didn't know that when I were in. I went through a long time back, that's what got me. I couldn't figure out what we did there, what happened to the door.
Anything else?
I would like to make a comment in relation to the lady that just spoke about the barts. Please understand, everybody in the audience, that when we don't make a comment, we are in review of anything that is brought to our attention. So don't take it lightly that we're not sitting here saying anything. We are aware of things and we are looking into things. So rest assured, that you and anybody looking and looking to us live on video, that we do listen and we do check out and we do monitor. So I just want to clarify that, that we are concerned about every aspect of anything that goes on within the county.
Thank you. Good. But I also like to just let you know, I know Ms. Bronson is still sitting here. And she's an older lady. She's eighty-eight years old, as it said. So nothing's going to be done tonight. So, but we will talk, just let you know that as well, if you want to leave.
Yeah, when I, I spoke to Ms. Aveya, I thought we were going to do a closed session. So, but we've got all the people here that's going to respond back tonight. But I'm not going to respond in this session.
Right.
So I thought it was going to be a closed session.
I just want to say to those who missed the NACO, Dr. Blanks was inducted to the Commissioners Hall of Fame. It was a great event. It was nice to see her. And I think it was more for her. She had more excitement with seeing people she had worked with throughout the years. She had actually done, on the commission, twenty-eight years, I believe. And there were two others who were inducted. But to have one from Blaine County, it was awesome. And I wish we could share some of those pictures. I think we do have them. And Mr. Martin, do you have those pictures? So I don't know if Blaine County does have a website.
We do. I haven't seen them yet, but we'll be glad.
Well, we'd like to have those pictures, please.
That'd be nice.
And you can look, look at some of those pictures on the website.
Okay.
And share them to the rest of the county, because I think she did represent Blaine County well for twenty-eight years. So, thank you.
Yeah. And also, here, real quick, I mean, to just kind of piggyback and add on that, it was wonderful. For me, a new commissioner, it was very nice. It was a proud moment in Blaine County, I felt, for me and for our county to have one of our own to be inducted into the NCAA C Hall of Fame. Because looking at the crowd that's there and the hundreds of people that attend these convention, conventions, excuse me, every year, and to know that one of our own was actually inducted into the Hall of Fame was very, it was a very proud moment for me. And so I definitely encourage, you know, moving forward, all the other commissioners to participate in, and not, maybe not all of them, because, you know, it's busy. It's hard to get away. But if not any of them, then the NCAA C. Keep it local, keep it statewide and county-based. Go to those conferences, because it is, it was very worthwhile. I enjoyed it tremendously. And again, to have somebody who has sat here, right here, actually, to be inducted and recognized, it's such a high honor. I was very proud, very proud moment. And so, just-
Anyone else have anything?
She was the past president of the NCAA C.
Yeah, exactly. And I had no idea. It's huge, huge.
There's one thing I want to say is all the commissioners' input is important. And if you've got a question, if you please raise your hand. And I'll take full responsibility for not recognizing in the past. But make sure you wave your hand so that we don't leave no one out. So everybody can get their input, because it is an important decision we make.
Our next item is Revenue Department. Ms. Carol. Mr. Nutty.
Good evening, how are y'all?
How are you?
My worst feeling is like very long.
Item A is considered approval and unpaid tax support and annual settlement for the year two thousand and seven to two thousand and sixteen according to the NCZ one oh five, that's thirty-three seventy-eight. Much by Mr. Britt, second question, Mr. Britt, in discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. B is consider adopting the ordinance directing the tax collector to collect taxes charged in the tax records and receipts. Mr. Britt, second question, Mr. Britt, in discussion? On favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies. Fine, I was going to say, so.
I'm going with the one month end in July, which will be eight percent of budget. At the end of July, we accumulated five point eight four percent of revenues and spent six point four zero. And just a reminder on that, some of the revenues we're still collecting will roll back into last year. Because we can't, we collect them and then they'll roll back in there when they actually begin. The jail construction, we're at eighty-eight percent paid. Solidways, we've collected five point four seven percent and spent three point nine three percent. Mercer's Telephone, we've collected seven point oh five percent and spent two point nine seven. And Water, we've collected nine point two nine percent and spent two point two seven. If I have any questions?
Yes, this, 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 would it be possible to get a, our overall view of the spending around that jail?
Sure. You want complete details?
Yes, if you would, please. That would, and when would we be finalizing on that? When we take the plug out?
I don't have a clue. I haven't heard anything.
Grand opening for the jail is September the eighth, at ten o'clock. And we're going to move inmates sometime in the middle of September at the plan. And we're doing the final inspections now, so soon as the last bills are paid, it should be ready.
So you're shooting, you're shooting around the eighth of September, that's what we're doing?
Eight of September is opening now.
It'll probably all be October, November time, probably before we get all the bills.
And then September, hopefully sometime in the middle of September, is what I understand now. We might move inmates. And then after that, when she gets all her bills in, she'll, she can give you a toll, everything.
Another one to ask, do you want to just wait? I would want to see a cop, if you were waiting to close everything out, then just give it.
I'll wait in the front.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question about the jail, what's up, ma'am? Do we have, I don't know who, you have a project manager, someone who managed the jail, building the jail?
Dame Brison.
Okay. So how much, do we have, how many years of insurance or warranties on those? Do I have to do different things, either for infrastructure versus roofs or things?
Well, on the, on the project, in total, there's a one-year warranty. I'm not sure about the, I don't, I'm not sure about the roof. I mean, that's probably separate. But if there's any type of problem in the, in the upcoming year, then that's the responsibility of the contractor.
We, we can get that, we can get that information. Chief, if we get all that warranty information, please. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Health and Human Service, David Howard.